Right. Please share the link with everyone and please. Everyone mute. Hello, everyone. Welcome to. Sutta Study Series and which we have started discussing about the. Majjhimanikaya Suttas from the beginning. And today we are going to discuss about the second part of Bhayabhairava Sutta, which is the fourth sutta. Of Majjhimanikaya, Middle in sayings. And before we start. Let's pay our salutation to the Buddha. Namutthas Bhagavato Arhatu Samma Sangbuddhas. Namutthas Bhagavato Arhatu Samma Sangbuddhas. Namutthas Bhagavato Arhatu Samma Sangbuddhas. Honored to him, the blessed one, the worthy one, the fully enlightened one. My utmost respect to the perfectly enlightened Samma Sangbuddha. And the noble teachings of the Buddha. And the noble Mahasangha, the disciples of the Buddha. Greetings to everyone and welcome to Bhayabhairava Sutta, Fear and Dread. Majjhimanikaya, Moolapannasaka, Fourth Sutta. And last week, we actually discussed a little bit about. The discussion between Janusoni and the Buddha. And today I am going to. Start with where we have left. So. When Janusoni said, in the wilderness, there are a lot of difficulties for people to meditate. And then the Buddha gives some, he gave some very important points. Why he did not feel. Like that, like he was not scared. He did not have any such difficulty because he was very confident of his own seela. And because of his own seela, the Buddha could, as Siddhata Gautama. He had no difficulty in living in the wilderness alone. So he said, one of those noble ones who frequent. Remote lodgings in the wilderness and the forest with purified livelihood. And seeing this purity of livelihood in myself, I felt even more unruffled. About staying in the forest. So Buddha continued to give a list of. Qualifications, qualities, if someone wants to. Stay in the wilderness, very useful actually. When he said that. And here we, if we continue from last week. Nakhopanahang Chambibhirukajatiko. Aranyavanapantani, Vanapatthani, Pantani, Senasanani, Patisevani. Vigataloma Hansoba Hamasmi. So here. Nakhopanahang Chambibhirukajatiko means I did not get startled. I was not like scared. I did not have any problem in the, in the wilderness. Aranyavanapantani. So. Aranyavanapathani means already in the, in the wilderness. And Pantani, Senasanani, Patisevani, when I was living. I was one of those. Who frequent remote lodgings in the wilderness and the forest. And so when the Siddhata Gautama, when he was there. And he says. Aranyavanapathani, Pantani, Senasanani, Patisevanti. Teesang Ahang Anyataroti, we discussed this before also. And I am one of those noble ones. I'm one of those, Teesang Ahang Anyataro, one of those. So he did not say I am the only one. He said I was also one of those. And there were some more very wonderful practitioners in the, in the wilderness. Eka, Eka, Etang Ahang Brahmana, Vigataloma Hansatang. So Vigataloma Hansatang, Lomahansa means the hair racing, racing of hair, you get like goosebump. And he had Vigataloma Hansatang, that means he did not have that kind of a. Kind of an experience. When somebody is startled, when somebody is scared, you know, Chambibhirukajatiko. And when something like that happens, and so they get like a Lomahansa, that is the goosebump. And he did not have that problem. He says. Attani Sampasamano Bhiyo. Attani Sampasamano Bhiyo. Palloma, Palloma. Palloma Maapading, Aranyeviharay. So seeing this purity of livelihood in myself. I felt even more unruffled about staying in the, the forest. And Tasamaiham Brahmana Etadahosi, to that me, Brahmana, Etangahosi. This occurred. Yeheko Kechi Samanawa Brahmanawa, Labh Sakkar Silokang. Nikamayamana, Aranyavanapathani, Pantani, Senasanani, Patisevanti. Labh Sakkar Siloka. Labh Sakkar Siloka. Nikaman Sandooshahetu, Havete Bhonto, Samana Brahmana Akosalang Bhayabhairavang Auheyanti. Now there are ascetics and brahmans who enjoy possessions, honor and popularity. So one is Labh Sakkar, means you get a lot of, when you are famous, you get also a lot of, lot of things. requisites, like people offer so many things to such people and also. They also get honor and popularity. And this also can be very tricky actually, when you have. Lot of requisites, when you have a lot of possessions. And when you also are honored and respected by many people, you have a name and fame. You have a brand of your own and then you are very popular, wherever you are, you are a celebrity figure. Then it's very, very also risky, very dangerous also actually. Due to many reasons, especially with the people who are into the spiritual path. It, it doesn't matter whether they are in the spiritual path or not. And there can always be very challenging situations, like a goldfish. You know, someone like a goldfish in a fish bowl. And in a, in a transparent glass bowl, you can be watched, you can be seen by many people around. Whatever you do, when you sleep, when you, when you dance, when you eat. Everything can be watched by the others, like the, the fish, right? He is very beautiful, very enticing, but then again. He is watched by everyone. Same thing here. Like when they are celebrity figures, when they are very famous and when you also have many things. Your defilements can go up, that merit bank will go down. Rather you will, you are tend to get more and more unwholesome things. In the, in the, in the way that, that can be very risky thing. Nakhopanahang Labh Sakkar Silokang Nikamayamano, Aranyavanapathani. Pantani Senasanani, Patisevani. Buddha says, I have, I did not have. Many wishes, I did not have many possessions. I am, I was not very interested in such things. And he said, Apichyo Ahang Asmi, I have, apichya means I have very few wishes. Ahang, apichyo Ahang Asmi means I have, I have very few wishes. And especially when you are in the wilderness, you should be very simple and we should be very humble. And you should have only very few things and. That is why those practitioners, especially in their kuttis, they have only the very, very basic. Requirements and nothing else. And the more you have, the more problems you actually invite. To yourself. So the, the less things you have, the more comfortable and easy for you to travel. And the Buddha said in a Dhammapada, in one of the, I think it is the Arahantavag, he said. Sapattabharo Pakkisakuno. So Sapattabharo means the weight of the wings, you know, the, the birds. Pakkisakuno means the bird. So the bird has only the, the weight of the wings. So it is easy for the birds to travel. And even if he made, makes a nest for, for, for his. Young birds and after that he leaves everything behind. He doesn't take anything and that's amazing. And, and the Arahanta is compared to a bird. Who's got only the, the weight of the wings. And that is one thing that I want to remind you again here. The Buddha said. I had very few wishes, apichyo Ahang Asmi. Yehevo Arya Apichya, Aranyavanapathani, Pantani, Senasanani, Patisevanti. Teesang Ahang Anyataro. So the Buddha said there were other people also like that in the wilderness. Living very wonderful lifestyles. And Etang Ahang Brahmana, Apichchathang Attani Sampasamano Bhiyo. Palloma Maapading Aranyeviharay. So Buddha says, when I have few wishes. Seeing this purity of livelihood of, with few wishes. I felt even more unruffled about staying in the, the forest. And Tasamaiham Brahmana Etadahosi, to that me, Brahmana, this occurred. Yeheko Kechi Samanawa Brahmanawa, Kusita Hinavirya, Aranyavanapathani, Pantani, Senasanani, Patisevanti. Kusita Hinavirya Sandoosh, San. Sandooshahetu, Havete Bhonto, Samana Brahmana Akosalang, Akosalang Bhayabhairavang Auheyanti. So those samanas and brahmanas who practice. And if they do not have, if they are actually lazy and lack of energy. Then they can also invite Bhayabhairava, fear and dread. So the Buddha said, I was not like that. Nakhopanahang Kusito, Kusita means lazy. Hinavirya, Virya is effort. Hinavirya means lack of effort, lack of energy. He said, I am, I was not like that. And Aranyavanapathani, Senasanani, Patisevani, when I was in the jungle. When I am in the jungle, I am very, very light, I, I was, but I was also not. Lazy, I was very energetic. And Aaradhviryo, Hung Asmi, Aaradhviryo means. So he had already started the, he was full of energy in the wilderness, he was never lazy. So whosoever practices in the, the vil, in the wilderness. It will be very challenging. You really have to be very energetic and determined. If you are going to practice in the, in the village, in the wilderness. Yehevo Arya Aaradhvirya, Aranyavanapathani, Pantani, Senasanani, Patisevanti. Teesamahang Anyataroti, Etang Ahang Brahmana Aaradhviryang, Viryathang Attani Sampasamano Bhiyo. Palloma Maapading Aranyeviharay. Same thing, he is repeating here. I am, I am one of those. Another those nobles, noble ones who frequent remote lodgings in the wilderness. And the forest with that energy. And then seeing this energy in myself, I felt even more unruffled about staying in the wilderness. And then again, Tasamaiham Brahmana Etadahosi. Yeheko Kechi Samanawa Brahmanawa, Mutthasati Sampajana. Aranyavanapathani, Pantani, Senasanani, Patisevanti. Mutthasati Sampajana Sandooshahetu, Havete Bhonto, Samana Brahmana Akosalang Bhayabhairavang Auheyanti. And this is another, another problem area that practitioners in the wilderness. Can invite Bhaya and Bhairava, fear and dread. And the Buddha says, there are ascetics and brahmans who are unmindful and lack. Situational awareness, that is. Mutthasati, sati is mindful. So mutthasati means unmindful. And asampajana means. No sampajana or sampajanya is not there in that person. So lack situational awareness. You have to be really alert, you have to be really mindful. If you are in the, in the wilderness, there can be snakes, there can be many risky thing challenges there. Say other, other insects or whatever. And so you have to be really mindful and more than that. It is your, your own mind that you have to be careful about when you are in the wilderness. And the Buddha says, I did not have that problem. Nakhopanaha Mutthasatiya Sampajano, I was not like that, but. Aranyavanapathani, Pantani, Senasanani, Patisevani. Upathita Satihamasmi, that means here mutthasati, mean here upathita sati means. I have already established myself in the mindfulness. Yehevo Arya Upathita Satih, Aranyavanapathani, Pantani, Senasanani, Patisevanti. Teesamahang Anyataroti. So I am also one of those practitioners. Who were mindful in the wilderness. Etamaham Brahmana Upathita Satih, Attani Sampasamano Bhiyo. Palloma Maapading Aranyeviharay. So seeing this. Purity of this mindfulness, seeing this mindfulness. Upathita Satih, in myself, I felt even more unruffled about staying in the wilderness. And then the Buddha keeps on expressing some more. Tasamaiham Brahmana Etadahosi, Yeheko Kechi Samanawa Brahmanawa. Asamahita Vibhanthachitta, Aranyavanapathani, Pantani, Senasanani, Patisevanti. Asamahita Vibhanthachitta, Sandooshahetu Havete Bhonto, Sam. Samana Brahmana Akosalang Bhayabhairavang Auheyanti. Now some other brahmans, samanas and brahmanas, when they are in the wilderness. They also lack immersion. And Asamahita means they have, they lack samadhi. And so Vibhanthachitta and they also have. Straying mind, wandering mind, they cannot focus, they cannot concentrate. So that is a big problem there for them and such people would invite Bhayabhairavang. Bhayabhairavang Auheyanti. So they invite fear and dread when they are in the jungle. The Buddha said, Nakhopanahang Asamahitha Vibhanthachitta, I did not have that problem. I am more accomplished in samadhi, I am more concentrated, I am more focused. In the, in the wilderness. So I was one of those. Ahang Anyataro, I am one of those practitioners. Who had accomplished in immersion or concentration. When I was in the wilderness and having seen that in myself. I felt even more unruffled about is staying in the. Forest. And. Tasamaiham Brahmana Etadahosi, to that, to me, to, to that me, Brahmana. This thing occurred. Yehe, Yeheko Kechi Samanawa Brahmanawa, Duppanya Elamuga. Aranyavanapathani, Swantani, Senasanani, Patisevanti. Duppanya Elamuga Sandooshahetu Havete Bhonto Samana Brahmana Akosalang, Akosalang Bhayabhairavang Auheyanti. So there are ascetics and brahmans who are witless, duppanya, no panya. No wisdom, duppanya is no wisdom, no lack of wit, wit or lack of wisdom. And Elamuga, Elamuga means stupid. And when you are in the wilderness, then if you have, if you are witless. And if you are stupid, you will also invite that unwholesome. Unskillful fear and dread. Those ascetics and brahmans. Some unskillful fear and dread because of the defects of wilderness and stupidity. Witlessness and stupidity. See, this is the, the other problem. Nakhopanahand Duppanyo Elamuga, Aranyavanapathani, Senasanani. Se, Pantani, Senasanani, Patisevani. Panya Sampannohamasmi, Panya Sampannoh Ahang Asmi. So. But I don't frequent remote lodgings in the wilderness and the forest witless and stupid. I was not like that in the village and the wilderness. Rather I was accomplished in wisdom. Panya Sampanna, Panya Sampanna means. I was full of wisdom in the, in the wilderness. Yehevo Arya. Arya Panya Sampanna, Aranyavanapathani, Pantani, Senasanani, Patisevanti. Teesamahang Anyataro, I am one of those noble ones who frequent remote lodgings in the wilderness. And the forest accomplished in wisdom. Seeing this accomplishment of wisdom in myself, I felt even more unruffled. About staying in the forest. So this Solasaparyaya, Pariyaya means sixteen. Pariyayas are there and that is the end of those sixteen requirements. Now you, I think it is very important that we, maybe we can have a quick look at those qualities. And how important this for all of us to know in our practice. And whether we are in the wilderness or not, we can always see these things. As important factors for all of us. And so. From here we can see and. Okay, here we can see, when I was still underwaken, I too thought like that. Remote lodgings in the wilderness and the forest are challenging, it's hard to maintain seclusion. And it will rob our mind. And then I thought there are ascetics and brahmans with unpurified conduct, a body, speech and mind. Who frequent remote lodgings in the wilderness and forest. Those ascetics and brahmans summon unskillful fear and dread. Because of these defects in their conduct. So. This Aparisuddhakaikammantha, this is the first one. So the Buddha said, I was not Aparisuddhakaikammantha, I was. Parisuddhakaikammantha and Parisuddhakaikammanthohasmi, Hamasmi. I was with purified conduct, my conduct was pure. And then he goes on to say another one. And that is the unskillful fear and dread will also be there for those. People in the, in the village because of their defects in livelihood. And here we have. Yeheko Kechi Samanawa Brahmana, Aparisuddh Vachi Kammantha, so Vachi Kammantha. And Aparisuddh Manokammantha and Kaikammantha, Vachi Kammantha, Manokammantha. So we can see body, verb, the verbal and the body, speech and the mind. So this, if that is Aparisuddha or unpurified and then you might invite troubles. And then the, the next one is livelihood and that is. Okay, over here, we can see. Sensual pleasures, okay, Kamesu Tibbasaraga, so that is sensual pleasure. Desire for sensual pleasures with acute lust, that will also be problematic. And I was, I am not full of desire in the jungle, so I could have. Good time in the jungle and then I have a heart full of love and that is Metta, Mettachitta. Right, heart full of love and the Buddha says here Mettachitta. Arya Mettachitta and the other one is. Free of dullness and drowsiness, Thina Midha, you can see Thina Midha. And Buddha says, I was Vigatathina Minta, in the wilderness. And then he also say, talks about restless with no peace of mind. And that is Avpasannachitta, Uddhata Avpasannachitta, that Uddhacha. And Avpasannachitta and Buddha said, Uupasantachitta, Arya Uupasanasantachitta. I, my mind is peaceful. And then the other one is doubting and uncertain and that is. We can hear, see Kanka and Vichikicha. And he says, I was, I've gone beyond doubt, Thinnavichikicha. And the other one is glorify themselves and put down others. This is Attukkansana and Paravambana and Buddha says, I was not like that. Anattukkansha and Aparavambhi, I don't glorify myself and put down others. And the other one is cowardly and craven, that is Chambi Bhirukajatika. And Buddha said, I was not like that. And the other one is. Labh Sakkar Silokang Nikamayamana, I enjoying possessions, honor and popularity. And Buddha said, I have very few wishes, very few wishes. And that is apichyo Ahang Asmi, apichyo Ahang Asmi. And then we have Kusita Hinavirya, that is lazy and lack of energy. And Buddha said, I was Aaradhvirya, Aaradhvirya and Ma, energetic. And then the other one is. And then the other one is mutthasati sampajana, unmindful and lack situational awareness. And Buddha said, I am upathita sati. So I'm mindful, my mindfulness was very good. And then almost the last one, asamahita vivbhanthachitta. That is lack immersion with straying mind, monkey mind or wandering mind and difficult to concentrate. And the Buddha said, I am accomplished in immersion or meditation or concentration. That is samadhi sampanna. So that is, these are the, the sixteen requirements, sixteen problem areas that people have when they, these are the defects of the other one is the witlessness, duppanya. And these are the, the problem areas that one can have if they are in the jungle. And the Buddha said, I am accomplished in wisdom. Okay. So tasamaiham brahmana etadahosi, yannuna hang yata ratyo abhinyata, abhilakhitah. Then I thought, there are certain nights that are recognized, especially potentas. And abhinyata, abhilakhitah. Chaatuddasi, panchadasi, athami cha, pakkasa. You know, in the moon calendar, we have chaatuddasi, that is the fourteenth crescent. And panchadasi, that is the full moon, that is the fifteenth crescent. And athami is the half moon, eight crescent. Chappakkasa, the fourteen, fifteenth and eighth, the fortnight. Tattha rupasu ratthisu yani thani, aarama chetiyani, vana chetiyani, rukka chetiyani, bhinsana, bhinsanakani, and saloma hansani, atharupesu senasinesu, viharayang appeva namahang bhaya bhairavang passeyanti. That is when we have fourteenth night and the fifteenth night and the eighth night. And on such nights, why don't I stay in awe-inspiring and hair-raising shrines in parks, forests and trees? And so the Buddha said, when you, when you are like that, when you stay like that on such nights, why don't I stay in these shrines, paths? So it's interesting to know here, chetiyah. The word chetiyah, vana chetiyah, aarama chetiyah, vana chetiyah and rukka chetiyah. So aarama is the resting place. Vana is the, again, the forest. And rukka is the tree. So bhinsanakani, so they are like dreadful. Salomahansani, that is lohmahansani means again, that is the guspa. So atharupesu senasinesu viharayang, appeva namahang bhaya bhairavang passeyanti. Sokohang brahmana apparayinasamayana, yata ratyo abhinyata, abhilakhitah. In such lodgings, when I was like staying like that, chaatuddasi, panchadasi, athami. And all that days, in all these days, in such lodgings, hopefully I might see that fear and dread. Sometime later, that's what I did. So Buddha says, he would be more interested in spending nights in such situations, such days. Sometime on full moon day, sometime half noon day, sometime utterly dark. You know, that can also make people's fear or make people emotions change. Tattha chame brahmana viharato magova agachati, morova kattangpateti, vatova pannakasatang ereeti. As I was staying there, a deer came by here, magova. We also know the word migga and here it is given as mugger, same thing. And mora means mayura, that is peacock. And or a peacock snapped a twig. So kattang is a twig. And vatova pannakasatang ereeti. Vata means the wind and rustle the leaves. And even that one can make, you know, when a deer came or a peacock snapped a twig and with the wind rustling the leaves, people might feel scared maybe. And in the wilderness, it's a different, different experience. Tasamaiham brahmana etadahosi. Then Buddha, when he heard such things, so he actually looked into that. Etang nuuna tang bhaya bhairavang agachati. Is this that fear and dread coming? So when he heard the sound, he would explore more into that, he would look into that. And tasamaiham brahmana etadahosi, king nukohang anyadattu bhaya patikkanki viharami. Why do I always meditate expecting that fear and terror to come? So you meditate and you are waiting for that sound. You are waiting for that haunting sound. You are waiting for the twig. You are waiting for, for rustling of the leaves. And then actually you cannot meditate. And that is why the Buddha says, why don't I get rid of that fear and dread just as it comes while remaining just as I am? Yannuna hang yatha bhutang, yatha bhutas, yatha bhutang, yatha bhutas. Just as it is. Me tang bhaya bhairavang agachati. Whatever fear, whatever dread comes, I just recognize it. I just identify, I don't judge it, I don't react to that. Tattha bhutang tattha bhuto tang bhaya bhairavang pati viniyanti. So that if I, when I do that, that fear and dread will be gone. So fear and dread will haunt you because you expect it. And if I don't expect it and whatever comes, I recognize it and nothing will happen to me. That was a very, that is a very wonderful piece of advice for many of us. A lot of people actually without looking into details, they just get scared and they just get haunted. And if you actually look into that with more details, you might see, oh, this is just, just something, a noise, you know? One day, there is a story, one day a dog and a cat, they were sleeping. And suddenly in the middle of the night, the dog was very scared and he jumped out of fear. And he was waking up the cat, hey, hey, look at, there is something. I heard a very big noise. And the cat said, oh, it was just a, just a leaf. You know, the decibel power or the hearing power of the dog is very strong. So he is very sensitive to every single thing. But the cat is not such and so he was okay, he was sleeping comfortably. And the dog, because of his extra sensory hearing, he was scared and that was just a drop of a leaf and the dog was scared. And without looking into that, if you are scared, then you might be in trouble. There is also a jataka story where the one animal, he was sleeping and suddenly he heard some fruit fell down and he was so scared with that. And he thought the world, end of the world is coming. And so he started running, he was very scared, he started running. And then on the way, he met some other, another animal and he was asking, why are you running away? What, what happened? You're so scared. And he said, the end of the world is coming and it's like a tsunami and we have to run away. So he also, without looking into detail, he also joined. And so the other animals also met, whosoever met on the way, they all kept running after them because they thought something happened. And then suddenly at the end of, end of it, the Bodhisattva, he was, I think he was the lion or something. And then he has, what happened? Why are you running all of them? And then he said, oh, the end of the world is coming. What do you mean? And yeah, I heard some, something from this animal, that animal. And suddenly they went to the original one and they asked, the lion asked, what happened? I heard some sound, did you see that? Did you check into that? He said, no. So we go back and check. And then they all went back and said, saw that all by themselves. And they found that was just a fruit. And yeah, sky is falling. So the apocalypse is happening, you know? So they all started running. So similarly, in many cases, people are scared because they don't look into details. They just scared because in the back of their mind, they feel haunted, they feel scared. They have heard some stories in their childhood days. And all these things actually make you suffer. And today's, for example, you have a lot of, lot of movies and dreadful movies. And all these things actually can make the children's mind haunted. And so if you go into more details, you don't find it. And Buddha's advice here, just if you look into the details, you won't find any problem. And also you notice, you observe, you identify your emotions, whatever. And then also that fear and dread will not establish in you, it will actually go away. So eventually, even in the pitch of darkness and with the, with the snapping of a twig or rustling of the leaf can also make you afraid. You know, you are, because you are scared of animals or whatever, so you are scared. But if you recognize it, you identify that sound and also your emotion, you will not be scared anymore. Yeah, that is a very important advice for all of us. I think with that, we stop here today. And maybe we will conclude the sutra by next week. We will continue to study Bhaya Bhairava Sutta next week. Do you have any questions? Okay, if no question, we will stop here today. Thank you for joining us again and hope you learn something very important here. And these are also very useful studies, useful lessons for all of us. And also please learn these things and practice and how important these things are for our own daily life and also our spiritual practice, all of them are very important. So keep studying and keep practicing. And hopefully you will have no fear and no dread one day, without fear, without dread. May all of us be able to achieve that fearless, dreadless, beautiful status called supreme bliss of Nibbana. May you all be well, happy, healthy, safe wherever you are. May all sentient beings and all of us, our family members, friends and relatives, be able to achieve the supreme bliss of Nibbana. Thinking thus, please say sadhu, sadhu, sadhu. Abhivadanasilis nichang vadhha pachaino, chatharo dhamma vadhangte ayuvanu sukambalan. Ayuraro kyasangpati saggasangpatimivacha, atoni bana sangpati iminate samijatu. Sadhu, sadhu, sadhu. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Bhanteji.